This conference will now be recorded.
We'll call to order the Monterey Select Board Act, six oh two PM on June 11th. We have all three members of the board present here in town hall. And I think we'll go a little bit out of order just to handle people who are visiting. So thanks Adam for coming to talk about the equipment placement again. Someone, Mickey mentioned to me that it's worth mentioning to the TB and the public, but there's no public here, that where this isn't what it is. So it's on Sylvan Road where Tieringham Road used to go. And there's already three Verizon boxes there. And this is a request to place a small metal box, a few feet by a few feet on a concrete pad.
Yeah, so the paperwork I sent, the satellite views a little, you can kind of make it out. It's fuzzy, but you can see the, the old Verizon D slams here. And the dimensions of what we're placing, which is just that little cabinet Scott is about three foot by three foot and about sixty inches, sixty-five inches tall in it. So not much different than what's there already.
Uh, it's actually smaller. The D slam that's there is pretty wide box and about sixty inches tall or something.
And what was the outcome from Donna?
There's no outcome quite yet. Adam was explaining to me briefly before the meeting, some of the different ways forward. And I think at the end of the day, Adam, what we should probably do, as long as we generally agree and you generally agree, maybe the town, maybe the lawyers can just work on whatever legality needs to happen. Cause that's not something that we can really do in this room. But do you want to kind of go over what the general permitting or licensing processes?
Yeah, so my lawyer's out of Springfield with this and he works with the, I think, Paulio, he's familiar with this kind of stuff already. Ultimately, we like the easement so that this is, there's some permanence to this whole thing. But the understanding is that the vote last week for two, it's been two weeks, well eight. But the vote at the prior meeting is essentially the license and it allows us to move forward. But it would not be an easement and it wouldn't, it would, it would be revocable. So we have to get renewed every couple of years, I think three or four months on it. So ultimately, we would like to get the easement, but have to go in front of town meeting. And I know there's a meeting coming in November, of course, they want it in the spring. In looking for a surveyor, they're two or three months out anyways to get surveys done and the site plans drawn, which would have to be submitted as part of the easement, as exhibited to the easement. So the suggestion from the lawyer, if it's okay with the town and your legal folks, that we could proceed with, on the license and then get the easements as soon as we can on town meetings.
And who has, do we have to pay for the surveyor or is that on you?
You're welcome to pay.
You'd say absolutely.
Specifically Susan has to pay.
Yeah, well, then it's not happening.
That's, that's what I suppose we'd be taking on.
All right, well, if it's okay with everyone on the board, if they're, they're generally okay with this, I would be open to, you know, approving a license and maybe based on the vote a couple of weeks ago, that's sufficient, but we can reiterate tonight that we're okay with you putting the equipment as specified on that property. And then we'll move forward with an easement to make it more of a long-term solution in November.
That works for me.
It works for me.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I was, I was up there and looked at it and only because of recent experience that I've had with other commission and where it's located, should ConCon be involved?
It's more than a hundred feet.
It's all, I, I, no, but there's also trees.
I think what should happen.
Not that, not that I don't think you should be able to put it there, but I just know.
I think what should happen, Adam, if it's okay with you, do you know Kim, the agent?
Weatherall.
No.
I can't.
I think what should happen is that we should just mention it to them.
So kind of how?
Because they can say, there's nothing that needs to be done.
Cause I saw where it was and it's, it's definitely more than a hundred feet. Yeah, I mean, it's outside of the buffer.
Yeah.
And it's not a wetlands area. No, no. The, the D P backs up, so I'm sure there's wetlands and the horizon stuff's already there.
Right.
I was just being cautious and at least asking beforehand, before afterwards.
We're act, we're, I'm exercising an abundance of caution these days.
Yeah. I, I read that Susan's. Let me, uh, let, let me, uh, I'll, I'll talk to her. Well, let me talk to her and at least point out where it is to them and that it's happening. And I can get her, I can get her, I get their thought.
Okay.
And then, and get back to you. Is that what, you okay?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, everything I understand about ConCon, it shouldn't take anything, but we can reiterate that it doesn't require anything.
Yep, yeah, that's all. Okay. Nothing.
In the past, I might have been gone for asking for goodness, but under the current moment, I'm gonna say asking is better.
I think what I'll do then, just for, for your purposes, to really make this clear, I'll move that we grant Fiber Connect permission to place the equipment as noted in their request and drawings. And then we'll seek a permanent easement at a future town meeting.
Slime, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. And yeah, so that's unanimous approval. So if there were any doubts before.
I think the board.
There shouldn't be any. And I, maybe what we can do is just set our councils up so that they can work on the easement. Or if your council just wants to draft the easement, ours can just.
Yeah, he's already working on that. And it's a very simple, straightforward one. And then like I said, we'll get the site plan underway as soon as a surveyor's available. We can submit that to you guys for any questions or lines. Any questions or lines.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thanks for coming back again.
Not a problem, always a pleasure. And I'll be nice.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Hey Dad, that's the same thing we love.
I don't need to draw any, but.
Under the current moment.
All of that my house right now on the top of the valley. My basement's a lot smaller than this.
It is, it is funny though, cause I was appreciating, I was appreciating the salamanders the other day. The little, the black and yellow ones and the orange newts. And I was like, as difficult as it is to kind of stomach all of the permitting and bureaucracy, I do appreciate that we protect the wetlands. It can be tough, but it's worth it at the end of the day. And you know what, makes sense.
In the spring especially, like, I don't know if you go on that trail much, but up at, but well, the Loom Brook Trail, this section of it that's kind of at the south end that I usually am coming back up there from Loom Brook that goes through this one woodland. A, a couple of times we've been through there where like, we literally had to walk, watching every step. There were so many, so.
Really?
The ground was, it was just like that perfect spring moment and it was just salamanders everywhere. And you were pretty stiff on it. There were that many, it was intense.
That's a cool thing.
It was very cool.
Um, I don't think there are any appropriation transfer requests.
No.
Yay, that, that's progress, right?
Yeah, there may be a couple.
There may be some.
Yeah, no, we still.
I told Roger, I'm just gonna put it on each agenda so that they do it.
If there's like, just.
In the next one, we can just handle it. We're spending one thing, just to put on people's radar. We're spending down the milfoil money and we might do a reserve fund request for $400 just to cleanly pay off an invoice for the milfoil money.
Just thinking, can you do that to a special article? Transfer.
That is a very special.
I just, just thought of it, I was looking, I can always grab it from.
If we can't do a reserve fund, then we can't do a transfer, I don't think. But that's a good question.
I can't, I can't find a.
I would just ask Eric.
Yeah.
Just ask Eric. And then my sense would be, yeah, we can't do that and we can't do that. Maybe we could split up, talking to Eric about what he thinks. DAR renewal.
That's what this is.
I think it's pretty straightforward, but you haven't made our forever, does anyone, or not forever, but for a few years. Unless there's any questions, we'll approve that.
I, I didn't see any problem with it, sorry.
I will move to approve the DAR contract.
Second.
Is there any discussion that we'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so that's.
It was, uh, just make sure that you know. Oh, here's also, this is supposed to be, this is, this is the municipality, I guess, if you can sign that too. Uh, the total is $7,230.
And that's the whole payroll system?
No, that's.
Or just the accounting?
I say accounting, I'm sure. Payroll is what's.
Uh, time intended.
Time intended.
Harper's.
Harper.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, so you pay your bill invoices.
I'm wondering, it's, it's actually not too bad. Figuring it out, little by little, I'm getting some information, good information.
Have you, did you use DAR in?
No, I, I heard of it, but I'd, I'd never used it.
I actually think Monterey is relatively new to DAR, but maybe.
About its third year, I think, isn't it?
Maybe a little more than.
Yeah, maybe a little, maybe like when we got outsourced our accounting and treasurer to. Anyway, all right, there we go. The fire company, state rose is happening. The past few years, I can't put a number on it, there have been oversized signs at both the fire station and at the intersection of 23 and 57. I sent you all the section of the zoning bylaws, the select board can grant a grant permission for the oversized signage. There's, they would still stick within the 30 days of having it up, no more than 30 days before the event. And that's the request. And because I'm relaying my request, although I have no, you know, financial stake, I'm not, I, I won't vote on it, but.
I have no problem with it, I'll move that we approve the.
Oh, second.
Permit, yeah.
All right, so that's approved. Um, I'll let Sean know about that. So when we see oversized signs, no one's surprised. The annual appointments, I did have some changes since you all have last seen it.
Did you send that? Did you send that today?
Did I ever know? Did I?
I'll say. Good, you did, let it hang on, I can tell you.
I'm actually gonna resend and update it one, so if you're pulling up.
Saturday, when you send all the docs for the board.
Oh, I didn't, oh.
And did you change it to Saturday?
Yes, oh yeah. I mean, not oh yeah, but.
It's completely, completely.
So I just felt, felt like it'd be smoother this year. In years past, we'll look at the appointment list and then we'll have questions, comments, concerns on the day of, and then we make, pulled off a few, so I figured why not look at it this week? And then make the appointments hopefully next week.
So I had a couple of questions. Yeah, I have some questions too, and I don't have yours yet, even though you resigned, it hasn't shown up yet. That's fine, it will. My question, so why are the MCC terms only one year?
I don't think they need to be.
I mean, I, I'm thinking we should do the same thing we do with most committees, which is give them some staggered terms.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They're all one year appointments.
I, I wasn't around for the original creation of the community center committee.
Right.
I think the nice thing about staggering is it keeps kind of consistent.
Yeah, a little bit of continuity anyway.
On the other hand, we get a number of these people on the committee, I think I've been on it for five years.
I mean, there's nothing to prevent someone who's on it from re-upping, even if it's the one year, but I'm just saying like, we could just.
I'm not opposed, I mean, Ray sent a question for renewable energy, except renewable energy by design, I remember sitting with Peter and he wanted specific short deadlines, because he wanted the group to do something.
Right, yeah.
And get it done. Community Center's different.
Because it's the right, fully terminal.
The nice thing about one year is it just does kind of.
Remind us he's on.
Yeah, and also if there are people who are incredibly inactive.
Can't turn.
We just figure out, okay, so and so moved out of the town.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be, I think Lake Garfield Working Group is kind of in the same boat.
Yep.
Because like Garfield Working Group is kind of very at a transition point right now, I would, I would like to keep those one year. Because we're working on the mission and. Yeah, I don't know, I think giving it one year is simple, I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing.
I'm not, I don't have a strong feeling either way. It was just like, for most things, we don't do that, so it's kind of surprising.
Yeah.
So these are, so these are all appointments.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, I do have a couple of comments. So under police is, police is something that I added. I emailed back with Brian a little bit today and figured out what he wanted. You can see there, the only kind of change was you, we all know Jen and Melanie, right? The two part-time officers, which is actually not a lot, we used to have more.
Yeah.
And it's different since now we have three full timers, but that's still not a lot. Um, and then Gareth as a detail officer. Which Brian said that Gareth's been doing quite a few details, so. Those are the police, Melanie's appointment technically expires in November. I'm thinking we should just appoint her through next June 30th and just get everyone on this schedule.
Okay.
Brian was kind of in the same way, like, it's very hard to keep track of appointments that expire in the middle of the year. Lake Garfield Working Group, a couple of people had question marks just because I haven't heard back from them. We heard back from other people in the Garfield.
So open space, we just skipped over?
Oh yeah, yeah, unless there's questions.
My only question, and I, I wrote Margie earlier today and I'm not sure if she got back to me, is like, I don't think it's permanent commitment.
It doesn't.
Yeah, I thought it was for six months, you had to.
Well, no, it's through the, producing the plan.
Right, but I thought.
Which is done in like July.
Yeah.
So I guess we can make it a year and it'll just become.
Yeah, but do you keep a committee after you get the plans submitted?
It's not clear why. So if we want, like, there, we might have to, if the town decides to do the CPA, but that's the planning board doing that.
Yeah.
I, I don't know exactly what they would do.
I think you just appoint it for one year because it's simple and it's not gonna take more than a year. And trying to appoint him for a month is complicated.
Right, and just, just letting him become, become more abundant is easier than changing the appointment date really.
Oh yeah, I think so. I mean, and then what's happened to, and we can have this discussion if we want, but there were groups like the Transfer Station Committee that we formed, they did quite a bit of work on things.
It was kind of ad hoc and I think it's coming back because we're, we are reconsidering the possibility of pay-as-you throw or possibly some other things. I mean, we can see how much work we're gonna encourage people to get their trash down, but.
And so, and I think also to some degree, that committee kind of just became a select board member, town administrator and director of operations, meeting attacking the project on a regular basis and not a formally appointed committee, which is totally fine.
And often a finance committee member too.
Yeah, so that's totally fine.
Which can be ad hoc and doesn't necessarily, meaning we can just, there's no reason we can't just get together and have that conversation, technically it doesn't even constitute me.
Yeah, so.
There's not two people from any one board.
Yeah, so for the purposes of open speak, open space and recreation plan, even if they're gonna be done in a month or two, let's just appoint them.
Yep, okay.
Not appointing them isn't really fair when the, when it's not done, where, when the work's not done.
Rob Hooves is missing for the.
Is he?
Yeah.
Which one?
Rob from Open Space.
Oh, you know, Brian, cause he was, I didn't even know I was on.
Well, you weren't until now. This is not all of the appointments.
The former town administrator or something.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Lake Garfield Working Group, uh, there's a couple of question marks, I'm just waiting to hear back from people if they really want to do it. It's gonna be a little bit more work than it was. Is he on Lake Garfield Working?
No, open space recreation. I was just doing it in my head and I'm like, somebody's missing, I got them.
So are there nine people on?
Well, Jim and Roger rarely come.
Yeah.
But.
I think they, they, when they.
Tracy Brennan rarely was there too.
Yeah, but the RPC wanted representatives from each group.
And Tracy may actually have one or two resigned.
She's still, she's still, still in parts.
Still in parts, but I think she, she just couldn't commit to the time for that open space, so you might want to just.
I'll, I'll highlight with her in follow-up.
Sorry, I was a little slow on that one, I didn't really.
Um, Lake Garfield Working Group, I'm just waiting to hear back from a couple of people.
Kyle.
With question marks.
Okay.
Yeah, um, other than that, I think everyone has responded, yes, they want to continue. Memorial Day parade, um.
Everybody tries to, every time, you always complain at the Brit, I'll never do this again. And then they're.
I think I lead once. Thomas, it would make sense to have a, a different select board member. To keep things.
I have not, I turned it before, I was crazy.
I don't like the B R T Z or whatever.
There are some. Don't ask me to decorate or be on a pretty committee, those are the two that I'll never do.
I don't know. It's a $2,000 budget.
Yeah.
So there you go.
I'll spend $19.99.
I'm gonna throw you on as well as me.
All right, start thinking about it now.
Probably could sell, right?
Wow, there's a lot of people in the community center committee.
Yeah, we keep adding and not taking. But yeah, community center committee. Renewable Energy Working Group, the only slightly different thing you'll see there is that Roger.
Didn't Dennis resign? Did he resign for the community center?
Is that, I'll highlight and ask him.
Yeah, I thought he resigned, he did something.
Yeah.
He was, he was doing the, uh, grant or something, that's.
I'll, I'll follow up with him.
He didn't want a conflict.
Adventures, yeah.
He's still serving on the other side.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on that, I don't know if I forgot to sworn in though.
Renewable Energy Working Group?
Yeah.
Well, yes, sworn in. Then. If we just go through the rest of the one years, you have town accountant, town council, town treasurer, RAOs, the RPC alternate, fire inspector, fence owner. I don't really know if we. Yeah.
Every time.
We need a fence here.
I know, but I can't believe you actually managed to find one, do you remember what you went through today?
I didn't, he's forever.
He really?
Yeah, and actually, I don't think it's, we should probably, should find.
What is the fence?
Yes.
Do you?
Use fences.
We need to have bylaw.
Yeah, but we know that he knows what they do.
Like, like stone fences?
They need, we need to have a fence here.
It, it just requires.
We go through this every year. It's, it, it's a lot and, um, you know, the better.
Once upon a time, it was important.
The two-year terms, oh, the funny thing is, well, I just got inspected for one year, I think it's by bylaw. I could be wrong.
Yep, good idea, good.
But a couple of those, actually, some of them used to be one-years appointments and then Donna pointed out that by our bylaws, they're two-year appointments. So that might be the difference. Inspector of Gas is an annual appointment.
Yeah.
It says right there.
For reasons, you know, only the people can draft it that quick.
Council on Aging.
And that brings me back to why aren't these terms staggered?
We can stagger them.
I think we should stagger.
This non-staggering was because, like so many of our groups, they, you know, you start staggering them and then people quit and then you get new people. And then you're in a funny place because after the initial thing, all the appointments should be three years. We shouldn't have ever run into this, but it's just where we are.
But now they're all three years on the same cycle.
Yeah, and then the only reason I would give them all three years is because, yeah, I, we can change some of them to you. I can ask about staggering. That's a fair point. I think part of the reason I didn't tend towards staggering is like, if people are willing to sign up, I want to take everything out. And you end up with, I feel like especially on this, you end up with resignations and moving and whatnot. But well, I'll ask Lynn if anyone is inclined to stagger. Or, you know, if we can just drop in a two-year here, a three-year there, so they don't all expire last.
Right.
What's really happening here, by the way, is these were all, so many of these appointments were not made to expire June 30th because we really only started that a year or two ago.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So like Lynn's been expired for many months, but not any good amount of months, like in December. And Beth and Roberta are new additions.
Right.
And I think one of these may even not have expired, but I kind of went with the principle that if someone's gonna expire in October, we should just reappoint them now.
I agree. I, I think I'd rather just see everybody on that cycle so there's appointments unless someone steps down or something happens, you have to replace them, which case you appoint them either for, let's say it's never, you appoint them to the next June or you appoint them to June, a year, a year and a half, whatever, so they get on the cycle after that first appointment.
So we will, we will get that. I'll ask if we can do some staggering and I, and I think that's a good idea. Historical commission, we create, we didn't create, but we reinstated a couple of years ago. That staggering, I understand, because we set that up a couple of years ago. The problem with that is we had a lot of people quit and or not want to be reappointed. So the only current people were on a, have a year left and that's Barbara Swan and Suzie Leon.
Okay.
Kate C and Maureen C are up. I can't get in touch with Kate. Maureen said she can't do it again and Stephanie quit.
Okay.
So Barbara's gonna reach out to a couple of different people and I think we're gonna have, hopefully in the next couple of days, people to fill those seats, but. I guess Don Bargain, who was an alternate, stepped away from it as well. So basically, that's another one where we need to re, reinvigorate it.
Was that historical commission?
I, we're working on it. Cultural Council. Carol has been on for three years. She's open to doing another three years, as I, as far as I understand. So that's a re-up, you can only re-up once on the cultural council, you can only serve two terms, or at least two consecutive terms. Myrna is interested in doing that, this would be her first term.
By the way, I actually tried to find the cultural council on our website and couldn't. I, I think that might, I mean, it might be up there, but I tried looking on cultural, I tried looking under, you know.
Local cultural council, that's why.
Local cultural.
And the.
The LCC.
The Erica expired and doesn't want to do it again. Stephanie's term lasts until December, which a question there is, do we want to just re-up her for three years now? But then it puts. Doreen, the website's not up to date. Doreen was re-upped. Which Roger, I sent you an email, but, um, and it's something I've been teetering on the fence about for years. I'm wondering if I could just have access to the whole website.
Oh yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Just because there's a lot of times I notice something and it's often a tedious, cumbersome process. And I didn't want it because I don't want the responsibility of changing everything on the website, but like, I know I found it in the minutes that Doreen was re-upped for three years and that was just never put from last May.
And what about Erica?
Erica doesn't want to be re-upped.
Okay.
So she's essentially off.
And actually, okay, this is actually December of last year, I see your point about the dates, right?
Yeah. Stephanie, we could go ahead and re-up already for three more.
She wasn't the one that said she didn't want to restart, right?
Nope, Stephanie is good to go, if we checked in with her and said you want to do it for years, we could just line that up. Then. Nope, Stephanie is good to go, if we checked in with her and said you wanna do another three years, we could just line that up, then the only problem.
If this says Stephanie's on seat vacant, could appoint an alternate.
That's about historical commission.
Oh, right, not cultural council, sorry.
No, it's all good. Like, then bang, her head against the wall.
Right.
I am really more and more getting, and we, Susan, since you've been on the board, we've really mostly lined everything up on June thirtieth, but there are these outliers.
Right, there's, right, I know.
And I'm ready to just say, get rid of them.
Right.
It's too, it's too much to be in the middle of February, oh. Someone, such and such committee.
Is right, yeah.
Term ran out.
Assuming that anybody even noticed us.
Oh, yeah, usually does. So, um. That being said, we could put, just put Stephanie on the slate. The only thing with the cultural council and staggering is that they're limited to two terms, so that would actually limit how much they can serve on it for. But I would see if we could do Stephanie as well.
Oh, I see what you mean, if they're limited to two terms, so maybe you're right, maybe it's better to just, if they're limited to two terms and we. Want the presentation, just leaving everybody at three years.
Well, except it's all, yeah, so I wouldn't stagger.
If anything, you could say that, well, it doesn't matter now, I mean, it's like if someone was appointed in October, you could appoint them for three years starting.
From, yeah, I don't think.
It got the extra bonus of the run.
The cultural council always operates on this cycle of applications and grants, which is always the same every year, so.
Right, right.
It does make sense to have them just be done in June, because as you can see on the page, they open applications September, they're due in October. And then bit, from there, they award them and make sure they're all, so. Let's just have them in June, I'll add, as long as we care with everyone, Stephanie to this annual list of appointments, which would make the whole commission. Maggie through May of twenty-six, Doreen through May of twenty-six. Barbara through August of twenty-five, and then these three. Which would be. Carol Claire and Ma, Myrna Rosa and Stephanie, and it's not staggered perfectly, but.
At least.
We're not.
At least it makes sense to have it and, and to Jim, cause it's like.
I'll double check with Stephanie, if she should turn on the trees.
Concom, can I just quickly out again that we freaking changed the number of seats, so that, because it came up again to buy this in the buy.
It, they don't know what they're talking about.
I get that.
They, we, we were wrong. About having quorum with less than three people, but quorum is not a majority of the seven people, it's a majority of five.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But. Like, it gave opposing councils something else to complain?
But no, they were right, because we had like two people at a meeting. Not because we had four out of five people, I mean, we can. I don't, uh, it's very difficult.
But if you have three people appointed, then is it quorum?
Kind of.
If you have three people.
Mass general law says that a conservation commission is three to seven people, that's the problem.
Right, but if you have three. Appointed, but only two show up to a meeting, technically that's a quorum.
That's what we thought.
Are you saying this?
And apparently we were wrong.
Apparently we were wrong, because in fact, the minimum present has to be three, so if you have three, they all have to serve, and if you had four, three would be adequate to run the meeting.
Yeah, and Noel brought the same thing up to me a couple of weeks ago, and I talked her back into the seven camp. And I'm not sure that I can talk you back into it, but I'll say this, if you ever get, I feel like there's only. Ground to gain by having seven potential seats, because as you lose people, because quorum is based on your five appointed. And if you were able to get a sixth or seventh, then that can only serve to help you. But in any case, we can always change that in November.
Okay, I, I really, I think we should just set it to five, because we're hard-putted to get five.
That's the problem.
Do you appoint alternates?
No, it's possible that we could, uh, have. The problem is, I know even of the five we have, I don't think some of them are really gonna serve out beyond their term.
I know, and the, the way to do that, the, from my perspective, the way to deal with that would be the way that we should be, uh, on the zoning board, but mind you. We have five members, we're supposed to have two alternates, do we have two alternates? We do not, it's a lighter load, but the way to deal with it would be to appoint alternates. And it, because then the alternates can serve and learn, so that if someone steps down, there's someone to step in. That's already knows the ropes, but it's a lighter load to, to dip your foot in the water by being an alternate, because you're not, the, the load isn't really on you. You can go or not go unless they need to.
I don't know where the concom stuff is headed, because it's just. Just very difficult to find people to do it, um.
It is.
The only reason I support seven is because I think, as I understand it, and we can reconfirm this and we can go over this. Is that your quorum is based on. Uh, appointments, and so that having seven potential seats could really never hurt, because your quorum is based on the five or six or four that you have.
As long as no one brings in a question, you have to prove it every time.
Well, I think what Alex Glover was getting at was that we had that meeting with two commissioners, not that we had a meeting with. Five out of seven, I think she just, yeah, she threw in there, oh, and you're supposed to have seven, I mean, she threw in a lot of stuff.
Right, she threw everything that might stick to the wall, I guess.
Yeah, that's what they do, right?
Right, that, which, you know, that's a, it's an effective technique, I just, I just.
We can definitely consider it November for the.
And what the heck, let's make it fifteen members, yeah, we can get that, and like, it's just really, it's, we know it's not realistic.
Well, except we're at five now, and I, this is what I told Noel.
But what did you just say? You said we're at five now, but I think your quorum aren't gonna stick.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, we're at five now, Noel thinks that she has one or two more, thinks, maybe, possibly. If there was one more person who wanted to serve right now.
We can make one, right, we could appoint them, or we can make them an alternate, because.
But we could appoint them, if the quorum was only five, we couldn't appoint them.
Point them as an alternate. There's nothing to ever stop someone going to a meeting and learning about it, even if they don't have a vote. I served as an alternate on the zoning board of appeals, and I got called a couple of times.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know, something to think about, I know.
I, I have your email flagged, like, I'm totally open to it, because also, I to, I do see the argument about. It just feels like you're insufficient, if you're supposed to have seven, you only have five. Um, it's been a pain point for everybody.
Yeah.
For. Many, many years, for my time.
Yeah.
It's been a pain point for so long. I don't honestly know, how are we gonna fill seats on, are you gonna run for select board next year? Are we gonna fill seats on the select board, let alone the concom by law?
I mean, I, and, and my reason is, I may not be here to volunteer. I'm probably not gonna be here. Right, I mean, we, we made an agreement in my family to, to go away for a year when he retired, and I don't think it's fair to run for a three-year position and then serve a year and be like. I still have a reason.
Yeah, if you know what it meant, I mean, but I'm also in a, in a somewhat similar situation where, I don't know if I can do about three years, because I don't know if I'll live in Monterey long term.
But I'm pretty sure I'm.
Yeah.
It's not like I might not be, this is like.
Yeah, so I understand that, but what being, what happens when, and I don't wanna get too deep weeds on this, or too pessimistic, but what happens when. I end up living in another town and have to quit and you don't run again, I mean, we're worried about filling seats on the select board at that point.
I know.
Because.
We couldn't find anybody else to even think about this year.
In the past three elections for select board, you get the past three and then uncontested.
Well, mine was uncontested when you ran against, mine was contested the year.
And then.
You ran against me, and mine was contested the next year.
But then Scott, Jensen, Frank, and myself were all uncontested.
Okay, okay. We're all uncontested.
And.
And I was trying to find somebody, because you weren't sure you were gonna run, I'm like, oh, God.
I was trying to find somebody too.
Here's the thing, what I would say is, I'd be willing to, like, I, I'll just put it out there, I would run, but I know I'm.
Yeah.
We're going, then you're out.
Well, you'd be.
So I'd be willing to serve for a year and then announce that I'm stepping down, and I'll feel bad about it, but it'll all have been clear at the get-go that I. I'll serve as long as I'm here.
But is there one person in Monterey who's thinking about maybe being on the select board in the future?
If there is, I don't know that person.
And I don't, and that's a problem.
I know, I know. You're not gonna, you.
So I can only get so worked up by the concom.
Oh, my God, the good news is at least there's nobody, no power-hungry person trying to do it for vendetta reasons.
Yeah, but who's gonna do it?
No one did that, I'm just trying to put the silver lining.
I, I don't know who would do it, but I think the climate is so much better than it was.
I know, I'm not trying to be pessimistic, though. Susan and I in the past couple of years have both had instances where we tried to really, really hard to get people, is there something wrong, Roger?
Yeah, Jeff Zimmerman's trying to get in, and it's saying he can't get in.
Oh, because I locked it last week when we were checking up.
Oh, yeah, oh, function maybe?
Locked session.
No.
Unlock session. Unlock session.
Did I open up the wrong?
I think that's, oh, is that the one? Why are we still using this platform?
Oh, yeah, that, that was one that I used, I created one, you, you went right. The select board meeting room, yep.
Yeah.
I screwed it up, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, how can we salvage the video?
Well, the video, if we stop, it's gonna save it.
Yeah, and then can we start a video on the next one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't believe I screwed up, I'm sorry, I saw it's meeting room, I thought it was good, Susan's right, we need to get off of this, we need to go to Zoom.
Okay, so you want me to stop this then? So I'll stop this and go.
And open up Zoom.